Conversation starting, fire discussion, one to two. We do have a council member on dial-in. Karina, are you there?
We're here.
Okay. And that's somewhat atypical, but this is an important issue. Karina could not be here due to travel for work. And so it's vital that we have all ears and the council's opportunity to ask questions as we continue to pursue this. What we will do, Karina, is as the council asks questions, we will go around the table. We will start with Carol and move around the table, end with Peggy. At that conclusion of Peggy's questions and answers, then we will go to your questions and answers. And then, as there needs to be a second round of that, we will again start with Carol and move around the table that way, so that you have an idea of when it would be your opportunity to speak, okay? Because it's too difficult to try to jump in when you're on a speakerphone. It mutes out. We'll go ahead and follow that procedure. So, this is somewhat...
That works perfect.
Pardon me?
That works perfect.
Okay, good. So, this is, in some ways, a continuation of a study session we had last week, and consequently, then subsequently, a breakfast that we had with our partners, Littleton Fire District and Highlands Ranch Metro District. And we had, I thought, a very good discussion there, very good conversation. They shared with us their thoughts as to why they have turned in their termination letters. And I thought that there was a good exchange of honest and honest information. And they were very, very encouraging for us to go with them. They wanted to work together with us on this. So while we have received letters of separation, there is still a desire for them, for both of them, to work with Littleton, should we choose to select the South Metro route, which is obviously the route they've selected. So, tonight, we have a pretty specific agenda, I think. We need to make, I think we need to at least give staff some very clear direction as to where, what council wants to eliminate, what council wants to pursue. We currently have four options. One is to do a standalone, Littleton only. One is to go with or to pursue information regarding potential partnering with Denver. One is obviously South Metro, and the other would be West Metro. Staff's recommendation to us this evening is that we drop at least two of those options, which would obviously allow staff to spend their time and focus on the other two or one, depending on what we decide, and use a better use of resources and energy. So, first, let's talk about the potential options to drop. And I think, council, let's go ahead and have, we can have some conversation about this, but I think if council's so inclined to make a decision or a voice to staff this evening about whether or not to pursue these, I think we should, we should look to give direction. Denver. Denver, part of the concerns with Denver as an option is that they, they have a limited connection via Inglewood, which means that if Inglewood were to end their contract, Littleton would no longer have a border connection, and that would significantly hinder services. In addition to that, Denver does not provide EMS services. And the other question is, what would, how would Denver cover Trailmark? And if, because they do not have EMS services, what would that look like in terms of us contracting for EMS if we should go to Denver? The other option, that potential option to drop, would be the West Metro. And this probably has the highest validity for dropping. Their mil levy is in the double digits. It's 12.382, and that's based on 2017 budget, which is obviously significantly higher than South Metro's, which is 9.25. The other problem with South Metro, or, excuse me, with West Metro, is that since the district has, is under NLMU with South Metro and intends to contract with them or move to their service, we are no longer have a contiguous border with West Metro. So, that really, really takes them out of the running, takes them out as an option. So, I think we'll have some conversation, council. Any questions that you have about either the Denver or the West Metro, any comments you have? Before I do that, staff, is there anything that you'd like to add before council starts commenting or questioning? Okay, Councilwoman Faye.
It seems to me that it's premature to drop options before we, as so far as I know. And I'll put a disclaimer, it could be that I'm far behind what everyone else knows. It could be that the other newly-elected people were somehow plugged into what was going on before our terms on council happened, but I wasn't. And so what I would like to have is a shopping list, so to speak, of what it is we're trying to find, and then compare various providers of what it is we're trying to find, allow them to take a crack at providing that. As it is right now, it seems like we're, making the shopping trip metaphor, we're saying we're only going to go to one store, and we'll buy what they have, and we'll go without defining what it is we're looking for. We're looking for something, we want to buy something, and so let's go to one particular store and we'll buy that. I don't mean that in a derogatory way at all to South Metro, it's just that I don't know what it is we're trying to get. I hear a lot of things about we want to get something better than what we already have. I don't understand how we could go shopping for something better when we, I, I'll speak only for myself, I don't have any idea what it is we already have. And I mean things like, how, how many fire calls do we have a year? What kind of equipment is needed to cover those? And I don't mean what could happen, I mean what does happen in Littleton. How many of these fires are auto fires? How many are one-room fires versus the whole house? How many are big enough to require a ladder truck? False alarms, EMS, what proportion of our calls are EMS versus fire? And then go shopping for a provider who can, in their estimation, who says, yes, I can do that for you, and look at all the options, and at what cost? That hasn't come up at all in anything that I've heard, except the 9.2 mil levy and what the other districts said that they, that they were all getting a better deal at 9.2. I have the impression that we might not be, but I don't know for sure. So, that is, I would like to have a breakdown, put it on a grid, this is what we're looking for, these are the facilities that are offering it, and this is what it costs. That's it.
Is that all?
That's all.
Somebody write that down.
I did.
Where are you? Where is it?
That.
My, I have a question just for the city manager, if you could, and I'd asked you some questions, or I sent you some questions earlier, and I think the chief may have also had a chance to review some of them. But one of my questions is, what is the rush right now to join, preferably, it sounds like, the South Metro before the Highlands Ranch group has their election to move forward?
Well, I can give you my, my perspective, and my look at the chief, kind of maybe fill in some of this from his perspective, or even Chief Tasker and our finance director, Tiffany Hooton, because they're all deeply involved in all of this. But, you know, I think from my perspective, I'm concerned about the timeline that's been established by our fire partners, the fact that they have both now given us a termination notice, the clock is ticking. So, January 1st of 2019, we actually have to have a solution operational by that date. So, I tend to look at this thing, working backwards from that date, and regardless of whatever the solution is that the council decides on, we're going to have to have a period of time to actually implement that. So, also, you know, we talked about this last week, we can't have a budget process that starts kind of summertime. So, in my opinion, you know, we're going to have to have, make some real decisions here by probably July, and to allow for that adequate time of transition. So that means that between now and July, we specifically need direction from council, what are the alternatives that you want us to pursue? South Metro being one of them, could be, it's going to just take us time. There's a whole myriad of complex issues here that we just don't know the answers to, and that we're just going to need to sit down with South Metro here, again, assuming that's where the council would like us to start, and actually explore all that. And then in the months to come, then we're going to have to unfold that here with council as, you know, time permits. And that's going to take a lot of work. So the fact that we have to work through all these details by July and get council direction, I just feel like time is not on our side. So, that's, that's why I think at this point in time, you know, staff truly is looking for the alternatives that you'd want us to pursue, and I think South Metro is just one of those, but it certainly is going to take a fair amount of time to negotiate. Chief, or anybody else?
I would, I would say that you certainly don't have to make any decision, but you need to be prepared to provide service, I would hope, at least equal to what you're providing today when the partners are gone, and that will cost you substantially more money than what you're paying today.
And see, I don't know that. I don't have any numbers that actually show up. I have projections, but...
Just based on salaries of our current employees, and this is what we provided council, Tiffany provided council in our last session together, the salaries alone are north of $11 million to staff three fire stations at our current staffing level. I cannot guarantee the same level of service, because Station 15, for example, which belongs to Littleton Fire Protection District to our east, somewhere in the neighborhood of, how many call out-of-district responses?
We have about 37% of our calls that are generated in the city of Littleton are handled by out-of-district units.
That means upwards of 37% of the calls in the city of Littleton. The first due unit comes from a station other than Littleton. When those become South Metro stations, those units are no longer available. How do we pick up the workload? 37% of 5,000 calls is a lot of calls. So now, when I have Station 12 busy on a call, I can bring Station 15 in to help. That will no longer be available January 1st. Even if we were lucky enough to have an auto or mutual aid agreement, it's not the same as what we enjoy today. Just to staff the stations at not even an equal level of service, based on our current numbers today, looking at our budget, we divided our training budget by the number of people we would have left, we looked at the capital costs and included those, we took today's salary and benefits and added those in for the positions we know we would need to staff, an engine and a medic, to provide some level of service, and it was north of $11 million. We know today that our current assessed values are roughly 800 million, and 9.25 mils of that is about $8 million. So your choice today, not looking, not having an estimate from South Metro, but from our finance director, knowing our AVs and how to calculate a mil level, you have a choice of staffing your stations the way you want today, north of $11 million, where you could pay $8 million and get a better level of service from South Metro, because the system would maintain its integrity. You don't have to make a decision, but you have to be prepared to either have a decreased level of service or a significant increase in your costs.
But, and this is where I'm saying things right now, is that, like it or not, we're forced into making a budget for 2019, and we'll start doing that this coming June. 2019 is when the partnership dissolves.
And we have to be prepared to provide a service.
Right, but you, the city staff, has to start making a budget, so we have to plan one way or another, we have to make a decision, like ASAP, because we're forced into making a decision right now.
Right, and from a, from a budget standpoint, we need to know sooner rather than later, so that if we understand that there's going to be additional costs related with whatever level of service that council decides on, we have to plan for that. We have a five-year projection over the, for the general fund and the capital projects fund, that we have to incorporate these additional costs potentially into that five-year plan. So the sooner that we have direction, the better that we can plan for the next five years for the city.
So the Highlands Ranch election is, in a nutshell, is what?
May, if I remember hearing, actually, for the both of them?
Yes.
They said they both were.
Yes. Now, we don't have to pursue an election here, certainly not by May. I think we're in a different position than our other two fire partners, so I think this is something that, quite honestly, is going to be negotiated here with South Metro. We don't know where, what they're going to be requesting from us on that level. So for an example, you know, we could be looking at some kind of a contract for service with the South Metro, and again, we don't even know the cost of that until we actually dive into that conversation. But we could carry that cost, that contract for service for a couple of years, and if the council decides they want to vote, whatever that vote is, maybe it is inclusion, maybe it's something else, you know, that could happen actually later, a couple of years.
So, but the Highlands Ranch election is...
May.
Is May. And when are they, when are they talking about?
Inclusion in the South Metro.
Right, so they're, and, so the citizens there could say no, is that, I mean, that's a possibility.
Yep.
So then, then they would, with, maybe they would withdraw their letter?
No, they made it clear that they, according to the MOUs that they've executed, actually both partners, then if it is not approved in May, they would continue with a contract for service, and they have other dates with...
With who?
With the South Metro. And they would have other dates for which they are expected to go back out to another vote. And so, in essence, the partnership is truly gone. They are now contracting directly with South Metro, regardless of the outcomes of these votes, but eventually, you know, they're hoping to get to a positive...
So the election, the citizens of Highlands Ranch say, no, they don't want to make that move, they're still going to make that move anyway.
Correct.
And then they don't go, I think they said they'd go to an election three times.
Yeah.
Bottom, but they're not coming back to us.
They're not coming back.
That's, that's the understanding you have.
They've given, yes, they have given their notice of intent to terminate the agreement. The Littleton Fire Rescue, which is the entity created by this agreement, will be gone on December 31st, 2018.
So we're standalone, no matter what, at this point?
It's whatever choice the council makes, it won't be this partnership, it will be standalone, it will be South Metro, whatever other choice, but it won't be this partnership.
Anything but.
No S and Ts, but it's gone on December 31st.
So the urgency is budget, we're driven by budget.
Service, fire service.
Well, but the service comes with money.
So, we're forgetting an important piece, it seems to me, and that is, what do the citizens want us to do? And it seems to me we need to find that out, and we need to let them know what the choice costs, the options cost, including the cost of if we tried to go in alone, which would require, I'm assuming, a mil levy, because we don't want to do away with all our other staff and services, right? We've got to have police, we've got to have services. So, I think we need a way to find out what the citizens want. That means we would want to have some idea of costs of options.
Counsel, this evening, we, we do have, there are four options that we have, that are the only ones that have some level of viability. We need to narrow that down, even if we are to go out to the community, and I think that we have a responsibility as representatives, that we need to get this narrowed down to what are the two most viable, or one most viable. And we can talk about what the community outreach and stuff looks like, when we have to do that. I think we discussed that that's something that would, would, would happen, but the first step tonight is if we could look at the West Metro and the Denver options, and are we ready to discard one or both of those? Kyle?
First, I want to say thanks for staff and the chief for the responses to the questions. I think they were good, they were very detailed, and had some good numbers there that show the service and the improvements that would be potentially with South Metro. Regarding Denver and West Metro, my primary concern is the level of service. The cost is secondary to me, because we've got to provide good service to our citizens. We know that geographically and culturally, doing it ourselves would work, and geographically and culturally of a fire department at South Metro will work. How would that work? Has anyone talked to Denver, and would it work to contract with Denver specifically from a service level geographically and then culturally as an organization?
Chief?
So, from a service delivery standpoint, I would tell you that I had a conversation with Chief Tate several months ago, there was a rumor going around that my firefighters were asking me about, that somebody from the city had approached Denver to give a proposal. So I contacted him directly and asked him, and he said that that wasn't true. During our conversation, he indicated to me that he would not be able to provide service to all three of our stations. It's my professional opinion that if I were in Chief Tate's shoes, I'd be very leery of looking at Littleton as an area that I would provide service to, because it would be contingent upon my maintaining a contract for service with Inglewood. The reason that we lean so heavily towards South Metro is, there are multiple reasons. One, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 80% of our border is shared with them. Part of our ability to deliver service is our ability to provide what we call an effective response force to a jurisdiction. When you have that much border that you share, it's easy to flood a jurisdiction with resources versus funneling them from Denver through Inglewood to get multiple engines or units on a scene. Your response times would be hampered. So, from a service standpoint, that's my concern with, with Denver, is that if they came in and provided service, what happens if Inglewood chooses to go a different direction? Could they still provide a service? Second is culturally. We run a fire-based EMS system. We have paramedics on our engines, we have paramedics on our medic units, we transport our own patients to the hospital. We believe that's a higher level of care because of the amount of training we require our people to do, it's better than a private ambulance company. Our firefighters and our paramedics are professionals. They do this for a living. Ambulance companies have good employees, but they're always looking for that next job. They're looking to be recruited by people like... They're looking to be recruited by people like Littleton, Denver, West Metro, South Metro. They want to be at that level. So they have a higher turnover rate, they generally don't provide the same level of care, in my professional opinion. So culturally, two different types of services. I don't know that Denver Health could even provide service into Littleton. I don't know how far they could reach to provide those services. So there's big differences culturally in terms of Denver. West Metro, they provide the same type of service we do, but again, it's about borders and the ability to provide your resources to a jurisdiction. I think that they would be severely challenged to try to put that same effective response force from our western border, same challenges we see from Denver on our northern border. South Metro is a little different. We have a long-term relationship with them. We provide auto aid back and forth with them currently, we have for a long time. We've trained together. They dispatch for us. When we had a fiber cut in the city and lost our 911 center, we picked up a phone and they started dispatching our units on the drop of a dime. We didn't even notice a difference. Our firefighters, because we have auto and mutual aid, work together all the time, and they provide an EMS-based system like we do. Very similar in nature. We're on the same CAD systems. Our computer-aided dispatch is the same system. Prior to my arrival in Littleton, several municipalities and fire jurisdictions joined the Jefferson or Rappahoe Consolidated CAD system. We're the only two departments basically left on it. So we share all that information. We can see where their units are on a daily basis and vice versa. So from a service level and...
Can you go back on that again, just repeat it again?
The CAD system. So it's the, we have computers in our, in our, all of our emergency response apparatus that our dispatchers can funnel information to about the call they're going on. It gives them routing and directions to the calls. And because we share a CAD system, I have the ability to see where South Metro units are, they have the ability to see where our units are. They have the ability to tone our stations and dispatch our units without asking permission through our auto aid agreement under certain circumstances. And we can do the same thing for them. We don't have that level of interoperability between any other departments. Denver, we don't know what they charge. West Metro, we do know what they charge, and we can calculate the numbers. They are known numbers, they're not hypotheticals. If it's 12.5 mils, we can do the math and tell you what that equals. South Metro, same thing, it's 9.25. We can do the math and tell you what that cost is. Ours is also known numbers. We pay our employees a certain salary, we have a budget. My budget encompasses nine stations and 190 members. And I know if six of my stations go away, and 100 of my firefighters go away, I can take each division of my budget and divide it by the number of stations or personnel, I can look at my salaries and tell you how many people we need to staff each station, and I can give you some pretty accurate numbers on what it would cost to do a standalone. So while I don't disagree with Councilmember Fay that we might need to put together some more information for you, I'm pretty certain that our numbers are tight, those are known numbers, and we know what we get for those numbers. So those are some of the differences geographically and culturally for me, that, you know, it makes sense from a professional standpoint, from a service delivery standpoint, and from a financial standpoint. I trust our finance director, and she knows math better than I do. But when we sit down and we look at the numbers, unless we're, and to cut the numbers down to what we're paying today, we don't have enough staff to get to those numbers. There's not enough money in our operational budget to cut to get to that level. You have to let people go. And the people is what's going to generate the level of service you want to commit to here. And that's where the challenge comes in for doing it yourself.
To go back to the mayor's question and point, I mean, looking at the map, if Denver were an option, to me, it looks like our city is a peninsula that goes into South Metro, or will go into South Metro, without any stations at the very far end of that peninsula. So everything's south of Mineral, let's say, and that's not even considering Trailmark. Trailmark would be kind of forgotten out there if Denver were to provide the service. The cost may be cheaper, we don't know that, but to have a lack of service for a good chunk of the city is kind of troubling to me. And then with West Metro, you know, that might solve the Trailmark location issue, but then we have this kind of, you know, wall of South Metro in between the rest of West Metro and the city proper there. So I think, I see big concerns just looking at the geography, looking at the maps of these two entities. And the fact that West Metro is more expensive, that we know that, I think that's a nonstarter too.
And just to add to that, I mean, one of the options you could evaluate if you wanted to truly consider Denver, and they could not provide service to you at Station 19, is to contract again with West Metro, which we used to do. They charged us $350,000 a year, and they ran about 36 calls a year in Trailmark. So that would be added to whatever cost you were paying for, for service in Littleton proper.
And I mean, I've talked to Trailmark residents that they want their station there, and they want the same service that the rest of the city gets. They didn't really like to be thought of as a stepchild, kind of getting different service. That's not what the rest of the residents get.
Built that station as part of our master plan to improve our level of service. Because in our master plan, our consultants came in and recognized that that was an area that we needed to make some improvements on. And through the three years we've been trying to implement portions of that master plan, that was one of the first steps for us. And I thought we did a really good job, and they get a great level of service out there.
Mark, what happened to the idea that you were going to propose a consultant to... We'll get, we'll get to that, that's the next step. All right. Did you have any comments or questions?
Not anymore.
Karina?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My first, my first question, I have three comments. My first being, I want to get clarity on formal separation. Regardless of our way forward, we still need to go through the exercise of formal separation, because even if we do unify with South Metro, anyone else for that matter, we're doing it independently of the city of Littleton, if that's correct, that that process of formal separation still needs to happen.
Karina, this is Mark Relf here, and I'm looking at Steve Kemp, our city attorney. We've talked about this. I think regardless of whatever option we are pursuing here, at least in the short term, the next six months, we are, we're going to have to look at the separation of the assets as an example.
Councilmember Elrod, members of the council, this is Steve Kemp. That's correct. We, regardless of the options that the council picks for fire service, we have an agreement that envisions that we're going to separate the assets. So we're going to be already dealing with that issue, and there's a number of things we have to do with that. And so that's kind of on one side of the table as the council works through the fire service issue.
Can I jump in real quick? This is Kyle Karina. Correct me if I'm wrong, but at the Thursday morning breakfast, it was suggested that if the city decided to go towards South Metro with the other partners, the separation would not necessarily need to happen, or would it be as messy?
It would simplify the process in looking at the assets. I don't think it necessarily eliminates everything. This is a pretty complex relationship that's gone back 30-plus years.
South Metro, member for the council, that's correct. I mean, for example, the training center involves parties other than departments, so we have to deal with that issue. We have a lease for the mineral station administration center. That lease is just between the city of Littleton and the reservoir, so we have to deal with that issue. We have lease purchase on some fire trucks, we have to deal with that issue. So there's still going to be property division, but obviously, if all three parties are getting along, that does make things simpler than if three parties are odds with each other. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Karina?
Okay, thank you. Second question, can either the chief or Steve clarify the difference between a contract for service agreement versus an inclusion or unification?
Councilmember Elrod, I'll start, and I think the city manager may want to weigh in on this as well. A contract for service would be an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and entity A, whatever that might be, South Metro theoretically, Denver, or whoever. And what happens is, in that contract, it specifies the levels of service, the cost, and it will have a term for a particular term of time. Now, I think one of the things that council may want to consider in this is, obviously, if you did a contract for service with one entity, and three or four years later it did not work out, you could end up having to go through this whole same exercise again. Now, incorporation into a special district, that actually involves the special district now becoming legally responsible for raising the revenues and providing that service. So for example, if the city was incorporated, just using South Metro as an example, once that is official, then the following tax year, South Metro would levy its property tax, and it would be responsible for providing all those services, and the city of Littleton would be just like any other piece of the district.
I think, Karina, this is Mark again. I think the piece I'd add to a contract for service is that, you know, you have the potential of getting into some pretty, pretty good detail about performance standards. So if your level of service, you know, a lot of the measurements, quite honestly, we use in the existing partnership could perhaps be applied in this particular instance. Then you could also be looking at language in the contract about what happens if they don't meet those standards, including, you know, some kind of penalties, time to, to correct that action or whatever it might be. So, you know, it can get pretty detailed depending on really the council's intent with that.
May I add something? Councilmember Elrod, this is Chief Armstrong. One important thing I think I would add to the comments that were already made is that when you contract for service, your performance is guaranteed based in the performance standards that are included in the contract, as the city manager outlined. If the city were to choose for total inclusion, it goes to a citizen vote, and the citizens vote for it, and then the South Metro fire district would redistrict their boundaries and allow a representative within those boundaries to sit on the board to represent that jurisdiction that's entering into the district. And I think that's important, because it does provide some citizen representation on the board of directors, if you will, for their fire and emergency services.
How many board of directors?
And as a follow-up to that question, therefore, Littleton Fire Protection District and Highlands Ranch, given, if I recall correctly, their letter and their intent, and given that they both will have to go to a vote, does that mean that they are moving forward with the intent of inclusion? Or are they also able to consider a contract for service?
My, my understanding is that it does mean that they will be included if it's passed. And then that the redrawing the boundaries would occur, and they would, they would get representation for their jurisdictions on that board, they're elected officials. I'm also under the impression that if the election fails, because Cunningham is coming into South Metro, and they're not bringing them down to the 9.25 mils right away, that they are creating an authority board, that if they have to contract their services until the next election, that they would provide them seats on that authority board. So either way, they would end up with representation of some sort.
And I, Karina, the second point is, if the election doesn't go forward, they would contract for service. So your answer to your question is yes on both accounts.
How many on the board, chief?
Currently, they have seven on the board, and they're going to have two, nine on the authority board. So there's two members from Cunningham that will sit on an authority board as well, until their, until their mill levy is equal, similar to what they did in...
And in our case, if we were to go that way, what happens?
Which way?
To join them.
If you voted into, if the citizens voted into that fire district, those districts would be redrawn, and there's representatives from each district that would run in an election and be elected to that board.
So Littleton has a representative, you said?
Potentially. They, not necessarily Littleton proper, it would depend on how the district is redrawn.
Generally, that's going to require contiguous districts of equal population. So say, for example, you have a nine-member board, there's 500,000 people, divide that, each seat would have about 71,000, 72,000 people. So Littleton could be inside a seat with some other areas, but the districts, the seats have to be equal population, and they have to be contiguous.
So lines are drawn, it's not necessarily the city.
It's not necessarily the city.
But they would represent the city.
But they would represent it, because obviously, they'd be enacted from that district.
Potentially, the city could potentially be in one district, or it could be in two districts, depending on how the lines are drawn.
Absolutely.
If I may, I think that is something that we could certainly explore with South Metro, if so directed here by council, to us to understand that. And I think one easy example is to, you know, to maybe Kyle's point, being in maybe a couple of different districts here long-term, the fact we have Trailmark, which is way on one end, and contrasting that with the far east and maybe the city. So I would bet that's, that could be very likely to have the city in at least two districts.
Trailmark too, if you keep in mind, also borders Chatfield State Park, which is part of Littleton Fire Protection District, and it'll also border Sterling Ranch, which is already included in South Metro's district.
Karina, do you have any other questions?
I do. One more, and this is a recommendation. One of the, we've all talked about in different ways, the need for an understanding of the service metrics. Also, the chief has explained to us some of the operational opportunities or expectations that we have when we are considering who we would explore service with. And then, of course, the bottom line is, what is our impact? And really, when we think about all that, those, our responsibility is to clearly articulate the service metrics that we desire to have as a city, the operational, you know, how we work or want to continue to work, or where we have a need for operational improvement, and then the fiscal. And all of that, for me, really comes down to an approach that would be a request or proposal. I know there is concern about the effort that it takes to explore the different options. But in essence, if we go forward and document all of our requests in a request or proposal, the burden is upon those entities that choose to do business with Littleton. And so if West Metro looks at our criteria and says, you know, we can't even meet half of those, they may choose not to bid on this job. So I think we nonetheless have to go through this diligence and exercise to outline the service level, operations, et cetera, the people head come. I would recommend we put out a request for proposal, and that will give us the data, and we will have, fulfill our responsibility of diligence of a fair and equitable process. And it is very likely, given what we already know, what the chief has, and the staff has already researched, that it is, you know, we are likely to see where that needs to fall, but I think this would be the right way to go about this.
I like that idea.
I think, I think the RFP approach is probably a little problematic. I think that there's a lot of merit to be gained here about trying to define perhaps our level of service and what that means to us. But I think in the, in the typical context of an RFP, there's just too much complex information there that we don't know how the other entities will react, where I think that we're just, in the end, still going to have to negotiate the details. So we may find out generally how they may respond to an RFP and some of the general criteria. criteria, but I don't think we're gonna get enough information out of that process to tell us for sure that that is the entity without sitting down and trying to negotiate the final details. That's my opinion.
Can we do both?
With all due respect, Mark, I, I'm disagreeing there. I'm disagreeing from the perspective of, you're right, there is a lot that we will not know, but we also, even just going in, even if we were to say we'll choose an EPA, we still have to be prepared for what are we asking for. So to me, we, we have to go through that diligence. Now, you may suggest we may need a consultant to help us to even put together an RFP, and that might be possible, but I, I do feel that we would, we would not go into a negotiation not knowing what our side, what we want from our side. At the end of the day, this is still a negotiation.
Well, I agree with that, from that perspective. Yeah, there's definitely some basic things that I'm sure the council, we can walk through and gain consensus here about what's important to you for like a level of service, for example. So I, I do agree there are some basic things that we certainly could establish upfront. I just see that the response from some entities will basically say, this is it, take it or leave it. And so I think that's why the RFP, to me, is a little problematic in going to them with a very strict RFP process.
This is Kyle. It sound, it kinda sounds.
I would say, I'm open, I'm open to, perhaps it's not a formal RFP, but it's the spirit of what an RFP is intended to do.
Kyle?
I was gonna say, it kinda sounds to me like you are suggesting to craft the RFP in a way that, you know, to define what we want, and that it'll help make it clear that West Metro and Denver can't or won't provide that. And it kinda seems like it's a, just a, almost a roadblock to rationalize the end, rather than we, you know, we have this expectation of what's going to come. Do we need to put in the time and effort of an RFP to hear that they can't meet what we want?
This is Carol. I, I'm still back at, we haven't talked at all with or gathered information from Denver, so far as I know, other than what the chief got. But if we haven't talked to them yet, and we haven't looked at what we can, what we can do with a separate EMS service, that's a whole world that we haven't looked at yet, and it would be a shame to toss it aside without putting out something like an RFP to give them a chance to respond.
I think that, I think we, I think we know more than we think we know, and I think that, you know, in regards to West Metro, there's just a reality, a geographic reality. And to ask them to go through, for us to go through the effort of an RFP, send it to them, I mean, they can't serve us unless they can figure out how to, and why would they? Why would they go to those extremes when we, we certainly will not go in at a 14-plus mill levy? That's completely non-appropriate spending of our public money at all, and I think we would have a service delivery problem. It's pretty clear that Denver, at this point, would, it would be a, a kind of a, I think it's the highest risk. We don't know what the financial aspect of Denver is, but if you're looking at it from a service level, not only would we have to contract for EMS, we talked about the challenges for that, given our EMS calls. I really do not believe, if Denver was to say that they would serve our EMS and through Denver Health, just the travel, the drive time alone for that, getting through, you know, all of that, I mean, it just logistically to me, when it's life-saving, that just seems like the lowest level of service we could provide our community. And I think that it is, it is an incredible risk to, with the Inglewood, Inglewood contract. I mean, we are, in some ways, we are dependent upon Inglewood with that, and I think that that's a very dangerous place for us to put ourselves, particularly if we go through these exercises and turn down other options, and then, and then that option would fall apart. I think that we would put ourselves in a pretty tough place. And so I, while I understand the RFP, I mean, I don't know that the RFP, I guess this council needs to determine if they want, if in fact they think an RFP is the best thing to do, and if it should go to four entities, or should it go to two, or should it go to one, or should it go to three? Kyle?
Why are we limited to four? Why not Westminster or Milliken or some other fire district that would be willing to, you know, bid to come all the way down here? I mean, it, it seems to me that we were looking at these four because we shared a border. West Metro, we will not share a border except for Trailmark. And so to me, that almost eliminates that. And Denver, we share, would share a very small border that's going through a funnel and kind of trickles down to little service. So, I mean, I think the reason we set these four options up was because of the shared borders, and when we look at that, just geographically, regardless of cost, I don't really, I see two options that are really viable. That would be us going alone and South Metro.
I would like to try to shift our paradigm for what EMS could mean. With private ambulance services, private EMS services, I, I believe that some of them are completely mobile, and that they staff their vehicles and keep their vehicles out in the service area so they don't have to respond from a station. In fact, that they have their people in the vehicle ready to go. Very different model than what we have now. That could be something that we do along with the Denver for fire and contract out to a completely different way of looking things. I, I understand that the majority of our calls are EMS, not fire, and that our projected concern with more calls coming in the future is that there will be EMS, probably not fire, of course, that's all probably. And so we're missing a very big opportunity to shift our perspective if we don't look at that possibility of separating them out. It could be a very good solution. We don't know until we look.
Well, we actually have operated that way, chief.
Yes, sir. If I could, a couple of the scenarios that we provided to council in our last session included options of standalone Littleton Fire Service with a contract with EMS. One of the things that I would advise council to keep in mind is that when we run a fire-based EMS system, our paramedics on our medic units are firefighters. That contributes to what we call our effective response force, which has a direct impact on our ISO rating. If you remove those firefighters out of the system by contracting with a private ambulance company whose staff are not firefighters, it would require you to hire more staff on fire engines in order to maintain your public protection classification, which has a huge impact on the fire insurance costs for businesses.
Well, let's look at that. And if you've already presented that information to previous council, then, I wasn't on the previous council, so I would move to get it.
And logistically, how would, how does it work service-wise for a fire department working with a private EMS? Cause assuming there's a fire, there's gonna need to be medics there.
We've done it before, and we moved away from it. We had problems with the private ambulance company overbilling our patients for transport. Response times were not adequate. We had our fire trucks sitting on scene waiting extensive periods of time for a transport vehicle to provide medical transport to a medical facility for our patients. It really didn't work for this organization, and that's why a lot of places are moving away from what we call a two-tiered system into a single-tiered system.
So in your opinion, the service level would be decreased going that route?
That would be my view, yeah.
And that would be.
Karina, go ahead.
That would be, that would be an example of a requirement that we would put in.
Excellent.
So as, as opposed to, you know, debating at least at this juncture, why we want this or why we want that, or who can serve this way or the other, that may be an example of a requirement that we are asking to be part of the proposal. That's how we would address the question.
Are you saying you would want a, is it fire-based EMS? Is that the term?
So, so to, to councilmember Elrod's point, if I were to advise council, if council were to make the decision you wanted to go out for an RFP, it would be my advice to you to write questions such as, are you a fire-based EMS system? Can you provide an effective response force within our jurisdiction? Can you operate out of all three of our fire stations? Can you maintain our ISO rating? How many personnel do you put on a fire apparatus? Do you run ALS engines? Will you guarantee accredited response times for an urban community by population density? Do you do your own transport? And can you do it for a cost of $8 million? And I can tell you that just on the cost alone, West Metro will tell you no, because $8 million is equivalent to South Metro's mill levy. Denver will tell you no, because they can't operate all three of your stations and they're not a fire-based EMS system. Based on the geographic jurisdiction and their ability to get resources here, they can't meet an effective response force. That means they can't give you an urban response time. We know the answers to these questions already. If you wanna get them formally, you can, but it's my opinion that you, you would be going down a path that you already know the answers to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. In, in two-tiered system, Aurora's a classic example of, they're fire-based, they have fire-based EMS, but their medics are on their engine, and they have a private ambulance system that manages their EMS calls. If you have a two-tiered system, doesn't relieve, alleviate or relieve you from running EMS calls, those engines still respond to those EMS calls. Not necessarily on all of them, but on a majority of them. So if there's a cardiac arrest, they need a minimum of five people to manage that call. If there's a severe chest pain, or respiratory distress, or a vehicle accident, or someone trapped in an elevator, the fires department still responds out of that call. So those 80% of those calls doesn't relieve you of not going on those calls. So that puts us right back into the same position we were if we were standalone. Those other agencies still, with the continuing borders, they still are gonna be dependent on their other resources, their other resources like we would with South Metro or in our current authority. So Denver still would have to reach even deeper in Denver to get their resources to backfill, to cover, while they're in training, while they're out on calls, if there's more than one call going, they'd have to move all those resources over. Same with West Metro. South Metro and the district and us, we're already in that position to do that easier. We're able to rotate people around. So I just wanna make it clear, just cause you may choose to use a second, or, you know, a two-tiered system with a private ambulance company, those fire units are still required to go, are gonna need to go to those calls.
So is it correct?
So, if you have a question, go ahead.
I would just respond to that. So in addition to a lower quality of service, it's inefficient and a strain on the system to do a two-tiered? Or it can be?
I don't know about a strain, but it'd be, wouldn't be as efficient as we've seen with fire-based.
To me, time is of the essence. But Mark, do I have that right?
You have that correct.
So putting this thing out to a bid, you know, I'm not a betting person, but if I had a bet, I'll say, we're gonna end up with South Metro Fire District as, as who we're gonna go with. Like it or not, I am convinced that's where we're gonna end up. And I, I, we're elected officials to make decisions for our citizens, and, and I'm gonna make that for District Two. And I, I don't need a consultant, I've been through so many consultants in my career, let alone here. We pay them good money, and they come back and tell us stuff that we probably already know in the first place, they just put it into a nice report. And I, while I'm, I'm no expert on this fire emergency stuff, but I've seen enough of those guys in action, not just in Littleton, but I, and I'm, I have a lot of trust in the chief here. And Assistant Chief, what is it? I don't know. Just to get it. But.
He's a pro temp.
But I, I really. Pro temp. Right.
You guys have something to add?
That's right. But I, but I think in the end, I, I know where we're gonna end up. I wanna get there as, as quickly as possible, cause we gotta make a budget. We don't have time to be messing around, going out and putting together an RF, RFQ, whatever we wanna call it, proposal, you know, quote. But I, I wanna move forward with this on making the decision on what we're gonna do now. I don't wanna delay this thing. I know where we're gonna end up, so let's get there. And let's do it without spending money to tell us that that was the right decision.
Chief, is there any truth that fire calls have gone down over the years, or have we been pretty steady? About 80% of our calls are EMS, is that, is that correct?
We run somewhere in the neighborhood of about 70-some-odd percent EMS.
Last week, you said 80.
Yeah, it, 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 year to year, it fluctuates, obviously. So, you know, EMS calls are certainly predominantly what we do. I'm, I'm trying to look through the master plan here because it does talk about what some of our projections are. I believe that we were looking at a, over the next 10 years, a 0.5% increase in our fire calls, somewhere in the neighborhood of about a 5% increase in our EMS calls. And then we have those kinda others, which don't fall into either classification. I would say that on average, we spend a lot more time on EMS calls. However, when the fire calls come in, they're significant. We have to prepare for the worst scenario.
It's expensive.
Southview Fire is a perfect example. If we were to try to run two stations and then augment EMS into a two-tiered system, the question council needs to ask itself, are we prepared for the worst scenario? Can we handle the worst scenario? Are we really protecting our citizens at the level they expect to be protected? If you have a trained derailment, can you respond to it? So, you know, a lot, we spend a lot of money putting fire apparatus in place for a reason. One of the ways that we're evaluated on our ISO rating is our ability to pump water to our largest facilities or our target hazards. Do you have a hospital in this jurisdiction? How would you ever evacuate a hospital or run an emergency in a hospital operating two fire trucks out of two fire stations? There was actually a, and I didn't even realize this, a letter sent to council recently from a citizen who had a relative that used to work in this fire department that said, we had two fire stations in 1961. Do we really wanna go back to that level of service? My professional opinion would be that that would not be the route you want to go.
Patrick, if I can follow up on that too, if you don't mind? So a trail derailment or something like that, we had one a while back.
Two.
One, we had two. So what type of equipment did that take? Who had to respond? We also had the, the fire at the apartment building, senior apartment building just recently. Who all was responding? Cause I, I know we don't have those things often, but when we do, it takes, there is no argument about what we have to provide.
We had a really good discussion about that in our last session, talking about auto and mutual aid, and when it's used and when it's not, right? And those are the type of events that auto and mutual aid is intended for, those large-scale events that exhaust our resources or capabilities. On the train derailment, I wasn't there, my guess is you got everybody.
I can speak to that, I was first there.
Thank you, Ronald.
Good thing about that, I was late at 9:11 o'clock, so everybody was, most units were in service. So the first arriving units were from the Littleton Fire Rescue Department, but there was about five or six. Then we had to call extra resources in because we had to outfit about 30 people for the asthma section of it. And we had to start with looking at the emergency management side of things, if we were gonna evacuate people, if we were gonna leave people. That actually went on for 10 days before we even really let the EOC kinda cut loose inside of that. You know, the other train derailment we had, we were really lucky with, when the coal train turned over and the light rail ran into it, that we only had about 20 people on it, and they were, it was in the section where they weren't on, and so they were able to get off. So even inside of those, there's not only the fire calls, I think people get fixated on how many fires we have a year. So if we have eight, last year we had roughly about 86, I have to double check number, 86 structured fires. When are those fires? You know, we have peak hours where it's busy during the day, where we've added peak units, and we've lowered those at night, but it only takes the one, one fire. If it's your house on fire, it doesn't matter how many calls or how many fires happened in the rest of the year, it's your house, and, and we have responsibilities, like chief said, there's, there's NFPA standards, there's accreditation standards that, you know, we're kinda held to in a sense, even though we're not following, but if someone wants to say, what, what's But if someone wants to say, what standard do you do? And we try to follow those through the master plan. It only takes the one house fire. And if you're slow on those, and the Southview's a classic one. We had our first three units were from Littleton, city units from Littleton and Southview. Those were very critical, putting that fire out. I came about 10 minutes later, evacuated people off the fifth floor and a fire was on the fourth floor. We really got super lucky that we didn't, someone didn't die in that fire. So do we want to wait another 10 minutes for auto aid? Do we want to, I always tell someone else, if I held a match to you, want to wait another 10 minutes before you take it off? Or if you're breathing smoke, how long do you want to do that? So it's kind of hard when you, it's kind of hard when you just fixate on how many calls do you have a year, or how many big calls do you have a year? It's usually a matter of when, not if. You know, we've seen rapid shootings, combines, we've had a helicopter crash here. We've had Southview. We have those incidents here, and they can happen any given day. And I think, and I know you guys are too, we're responsible for those. And it takes resources for those things in a short time to get them there. Other side of those things is that, you know, during the training day, we have our resources, but they're required to train for two hours a day. And then they require them to go through every building inspection for pre-plans. So if they do have a fire, they know it. So the crews, there's two or three, two engines and a medic out at any one given time, so they can go train on their skill, which forces us to move the other units around and move up for those. So there's a lot of ancillary things that go on the backside of those things too, that resources, you need resources for.
And those training events and those pre-fire plans that they do are all required by ISO to maintain our rating of 2.
So council, I think we need to, we've got a couple things laying on the table. We've got this idea of an RFP. We've got, so I think, try to parse this out. Interested in RFP at all? If so, to four, or we wouldn't do it to ourselves, I suppose. Or to two, or to one. And then if not interested in an RFP, then we need to discuss the removal of some of these options. At this point, it's just, you know, obviously we're going to give staff direction. Staff will operate off the direction of four council members. So we'll go around, and I think, does anybody have any additional questions? Or can we start to get some idea of where we want to direct staff?
Debbie, you had said something the other day at the joint meeting, that the trend right now is for consolidation, is that correct?
It is.
Can I break a little bit?
Well, I just, you know, the western side of the country is, they're all consolidating. I think LA County's up to like 40 cities and fire districts that's consolidated. We've seen it with Parker and Cunningham and South Metro now. There's probably, I think there's discussions up north. It's just the same thing we're talking about in commis scales. With two stations, I think in the metro area, since Cunningham's merged and they had three fire stations, we'd be the only two fire stations, fire department in the metro area.
And that's what a consultant would tell us? That we're the only two? So we would pay our $80,000?
We'll do it for half.
Has anybody seen the reports from, I imagine YouTube's seen the reports from Highlands Ranch and from Littleton? They're, the...
Monthly reports?
I'm sorry.
Your monthly reports?
No, not their monthly reports, just the...
They referenced it at the meeting.
Financial analysis.
Yeah, they offered that at the end of the meeting there, so we have not followed up formally with that. But they, oh, apparently our finance director's already all over this, so...
I'm actually meeting with the finance director at Highlands Ranch Metro on Thursday to review some of their information.
Excellent.
Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we would like to, actually, they made the offer. We would like to see their information. If I may, I'd like to just kind of reframe kind of this RFP concept if the council's really considering that. What I would really call it is more in line with what the chief was describing, at least I would suggest, that it's more of a kind of an evaluation criteria that we would establish if we are going to pursue any alternative, so that we can actually benchmark that against, you know, whatever our criteria might be. I'm just convinced that each of these entities are so different that a single RFP in the traditional sense, I think it's going to be a little limiting and a little clumsy in this instance. But I understand the concept that perhaps the council's kicking around.
And what did you call it again?
I think, I would call it evaluation criteria. That's, we can call it something else, but at least it's the, as the chief was describing, the very specific things that are important to us, so that we can kind of contrast that against any offer that we get. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's what I would suggest. I might reframe that a bit.
And you know, one thing we haven't done, we haven't done yet is ask Inglewood how they got to their decision. Not long ago.
Right, and we were a part of that decision. Yeah, we did, we hired a consultant. About $8,000 is our share of it. And it was, in my opinion, a waste of money. And they ended up going to Denver. By the way, I was at a facility today where it took 20 minutes for Denver to show up in Inglewood at a high-rise. So, you know, it concerns me. I mean, it wasn't firefighters' fault. It was going through all of the other rigamarole that, you know, that you go through to get to something like that.
If I may also, you know, one of the knowns regarding the contrast between Denver and South Metro is the way they go about these mergers or unifications. When Inglewood decided to go with Denver, they took their firefighters and they all lost their rank. Every one of them. They lost their seniority.
But they got compensation pay.
They went back through fire academy.
Three years of back, of pay to make up for it?
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge. To my knowledge, they lateraled over. They were all required to go back through fire academy, even if they had 20 or 30 years on the job. Some of them lost their jobs because they failed the hearing test.
Well, but there's a grid on Inglewood's website where you can see what they budgeted to pay each firefighter for, what they lost. So they were compensated.
They were compensated at the entry firefighter level. That's, they went through academy and they all became firefighters.
But they were, what I saw online is they were compensated to the difference between where they were and where they ended up, for three years worth.
I don't know that to be true. So the difference is, the conversations...
They'll owe too, like I did.
The difference being that the conversations we had at council's direction with South Metro previously, is that not only would they take all our people, they take all our people at their current rank, their current pay, their current seniority. And that's truly unprecedented in a consolidation of this magnitude. So, and I say that because I'm responsible for 180 firefighters that have dedicated their lives. 10, 20, 30, we had a gentleman in our retirement ceremony last year with 45 years of service to this city and this organization.
Yet they chose to leave.
And I have a sense of responsibility about what happens to them in these conversations. So I just want to make a point of the difference between how the employees are handled and taken care of in these types of situations.
And I would say that that's very important to me. Because I feel like that's also very important to our citizens. And that's, that is something that it would be very challenging to, in my opinion, disrespect the service of 190 frontline safety providers. And really disrespect the work that they've done to get where they are, because it's not easy work. You don't, you don't, you don't get promoted in the fire department because you've been there X amount of years. You get promoted because you've trained and trained and trained, and you've moved up, and you've passed tests, and you've passed a physical test and mental tests, et cetera. So it's a whole different game. And I think that it was very telling also, I think, you know, the amount of support. And when Joel spoke at the breakfast meeting and mentioned that it was a unanimous vote, I think that that's something that I have, I need to pay attention to that. That needs to be part of the decision for me too. So I guess, I mean, I don't know what evaluation criteria is. I guess Chief ran off a bunch of questions. We can send an email off to West Metro, send one off to Denver, get all those back, if that's what you want to do. I don't, I think we will have a very, very rigorous system with the South Metro. I don't know that an evaluation criteria is where we would be heading with that. It could be. At this point, I agree with Jerry, time is of the essence. Let's take a kind of a runaround and see what the preference is, Kyle, in terms of doing an evaluation criteria document that would go to West Metro and Denver.
Well, I like the idea, but I think we have the answers. The chief said, I mean, I understand the rationale behind doing that, but if we already have the answers and time is a consideration, just going through the motion to get the answers that we already know is due a disservice to our community.
Pat?
I agree with what Kyle just said there. I think some of the concerns people will have is, did we do our due diligence? Did we double check? And I think it's all out there. And unfortunately, it's just not wrapped up into a nice little package where everybody can just read and says, this is a no-brainer. I think there's a lot of that out there, but it's all out there. And so I'm also in favor of passing on the criteria and moving forward with making a decision.
Peggy? What do you have to say in terms of one particular choice or...
Would you like to see an evaluation criteria on RFP?
I was asking him what he just said.
I'm in favor of an RFP or evaluation criteria, whatever you want to call this.
There you go. You're up, Patrick.
Even if the answer is almost guaranteed, I think it's important to have something official listed in the criteria, whether we do this with just one, or we go with two and look at them. I can go either way on that, but I think it's important to put in writing exactly what the expectations are that we think we're having an agreement on.
Are you suggesting some sort of cheat sheet for fact sheet that staff prepare, that citizens can look and say, this is what council was prioritizing, a Firebase EMS, and here are the options Denver did not provide that West Metro does, South Metro does, Littleton does?
Well, I'm looking also at whatever, whatever it looks like our first choice is, that we see that that indeed is, they're matching up with that, right? So we say, we want these things, and they're either saying yes or no.
Pat, this is where you say to her, so what's your answer, Peggy?
I got her answer.
Yes. I didn't hear what Patty said, but from my perspective, I would support something like an evaluation criteria or a requirements document. I agree going to full-blown RFP is likely unnecessary. But I do think this is a document that we will carry through out of process. These will be questions that will come up over and over again. And we had from the beginning of this conversation and the initial study session, that this would be a fact-based decision if you choose us for that to be formally documented.
Carol? I would like to see an evaluation criteria. We're going to need to do that anyway, if we're going to look at the possibility of doing a contract for service wherever we go in the intergovernmental agreement. And it seems like we would need to do that, since the other would require going to the citizens for a vote. So that would be a preliminary step anyway to whatever we do. So we might as well do it now and use it for making the selection and also for defending the ultimate choice we make, or explaining, documenting how we got to where we got to. Because that is going to come up. And I would like to be sure to look at both South Metro and Denver.
I've heard enough information. I don't want to go out to a bid. Again, as an elected official, as a businessperson, I am capable of making decisions. They're not always the right decisions, but they're almost always the right decisions. I don't need, I'm not one of these people that waffle on. I need people to give me consultation, just to pile on to all the information I have. I can make a decision on that. I can back my decision on this. I think we're going to end up here anyway, and I just want to keep moving on this. Part of my decision is the schedule here. We have a budget that's coming up in June. And for those that haven't around, this city staff, the ones down here, they are very busy preparing a budget, all the departments and their staff. To get that together is very time-intensive. Now we're asking to do something else. I want to get this comp plan done. I want to get some zoning, there's so many other things I have to do. And to say, hey, well, why don't we just kind of stop everything for a part of the staff, and let's work on this. That isn't how I'm going to get things done. I've been very firm about how I want to move things. You and I had talked about this Saturday, how we have got to get things done. If we're going to have goals, let's get those goals. Let's not keep throwing something else out there to stop us from getting there. So my answer is, no.
No. And I concur with what Jerry said and also Kyle's comments about, we already know these answers. We know the answers about the viability of West Metro. We know the answers truly about, in my opinion, about the viability of Denver. And I don't have a problem, and I think it would be appropriate and probably will be part of the communication outreach that we do to the community, to show the breakdown and have those answers, or have those criteria kind of nudged off and so that there is a good, kind of a bird's eye view synopsis of what we evaluated and how we came up with our decision. But at this point, I am not in favor of going into any great lengths to get information and data that we already have.
I would like to see a summary page. I don't want to see it written by Chief Police Stevens, but I would like to see... If he's listening. But I would like to see some very brief summary.
Synopsis, yes, I agree. Okay, so... So that's it.
And that's wrapped up real pretty, so are we able...
The other, the other thing that I want to make it a clarity then from council on is the elimination of two options. Are we willing, are we ready to eliminate the option of West Metro and Denver?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me guess.
Oh, Karina? Karina, did we lose you?
Yeah, I'm here. So I don't understand where we concluded on an evaluation criteria, because that leads into the question that you're asking us now. So has the conclusion been reached that an evaluation criteria will not go up for, let's say, other districts' comments on, but that we will document what our requirements are? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So we will have a synopsis of the, of our own analysis that we share with the community, but we're not going to do a formal outreach to them, particularly West Metro and Denver. Now the question is, would you, are you in favor of, or do you support dropping West Metro and Denver as options?
Okay, so then, given that we will be doing this evaluation or criteria, requirements on our own with this information that we already have, it sounds like we already have this information for West Metro and Denver, so I don't know why we would take them off the table if they actually become part of the diligence of us solidifying the direction to go with South Metro.
So your answer is no? You want to leave them as options?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry?
I think I started, did I vote twice?
Sure. And I'm in favor of eliminating them as options, so we have...
So we have enough on Council to eliminate Denver and West Metro as options.
Which direction?
Direction. I proceed your question. Did we just take a vote?
No.
No, this is just you giving staff a study session. All you're doing, you can do is give staff the council consensus. Obviously, this could be part in general business, a subsequent council agenda for a vote, but right now, the whole purpose of a study session is you may come to a general consensus, but it's not binding on the council. What you do in an open session will be binding on the council. This just so it gives staff some informal understanding of where council might be at.
Otherwise, council or staff has to wait every two weeks to get to action.
Yes.
I have a question. If then we're looking at only one possibility, why even go to the trouble of, and this isn't a rhetorical question, this is a true question, do we even need to go through evaluation criteria since we're looking at only one possibility? And what we will get is what they offer?
Well, the question is now, actually, we have eliminated West Metro and Denver, but the other two options are standalone and South Metro. So we need to discuss if we want to pursue standalone, more information on that now. So I think that's where we should go now. Are we okay with that? Does that seem natural? To talk about whether we want to do a standalone based on what information was provided by Tiffany and the Chief at our last study session regarding the financial base and financial cost and related to service delivery. So Council, we'll go ahead and start with Carol. Carol, your comments or questions or thoughts on standalone?
It seems that we, in all due respect to the Chief, that we need yet another opinion of how standalone could work. And that we need to have a review of what the finances would be. I know there are people, but I would like to collect more in the terms of possibilities because they are, I would think, invested in what is today. And they're, again, trying to get thinking out of the box. And I know we have to do it quickly, but we have six months. You can do a lot of thinking out of the box in six months with some other perspective of what we might creatively do. Do you have any thoughts on what that would be? No. Okay. Jerry?
I have enough interest in information to say that I think it's not prudent to stand alone at this point for the city of Littleton, Littleton District, too. So I say eliminate that decision at this point.
I have.
I think it would be most prudent for us as Council and staff to focus on South Metro, not necessarily eliminating the possibility of standalone, but put pretty much, you know, go in the direction of South Metro. If something doesn't work there, look back to standalone.
I think our partners have spelled it out pretty clearly in my mind, and I'm going to stick with just looking at the South Metro as our only option.
Peggy?
Yeah, I agree with that, but I want to clarify one thing because Steve said this, the levels of service and the time, the number of years before we would be reviewing again, you know, anyway, some kind of criteria that would be locked in for the next 100 years.
Absolutely. What I have seen and been involved with user agreements like this is that there will be a very detailed scope of services attached to it that will have very extensive criteria, everything from, are we going to apply the NFPA response standards for a suburban community? Are we going to, what's going to be the emergency medical standards? There will be a whole series of criteria that would be part of that agreement. And obviously, when the agreement's term comes up, you might renegotiate those because in my experience I've had over the years, sometimes a criteria that you put in, you find, oh gee, this is so possibly strict, no one can, we can't meet it, they can't meet it, and it creates lots of problems, let's modify it. Or you find out, gee, the level of service here is really not what we expect, we need to tighten up the criteria. And so I expect.
So that's the other piece that Mark mentioned, that there would be language in the contract if they don't meet the standards, what happens? So those two things, really important?
Absolutely. Those would be in any user agreement, and those are going to be part and parcel of the negotiations. I expect, quite honestly, in my experience, the folks providing the service want as few service standards as possible. The folks receiving the service want as many service standards as possible. And I expect we're going to go back and forth and negotiate that and find a happy medium. But there's going to be, that's going to be exactly a big piece of these negotiations.
Then just a practical issue. I'm trying to remember what the uniforms and the work clothes look like. Is this going to require new clothes?
Uniforms? Clothes.
That is not in the model currently.
It'll require a different badge and patch for the most part. The bunker gears, we have basically the same bunker gear, wear the same uniform pants, helmets, all those things are pretty much the same.
Okay, well, I'm just, it's a practical question.
They have to coordinate colors so they don't clash.
Red, yellow.
Karina? Are you in favor of a?
I would say, yeah, so considering a standalone, is that, does that essentially become our Plan B? Is that how we would approach that?
That was great.
I mean, we're going to be moving forward with Plan A and doing all of our diligence and ensuring the requirements and expectations that we have, but if that doesn't come to fruition, does standalone essentially become our Plan B?
Good.
So if that's where we're going to do.
Yeah. Okay. We need a plan. Okay, so then are you in favor of not pursuing the standalone at this time?
If we have to rely on standalone at this time, I am in favor of keeping standalone in as a Plan B option.
She says keep it.
Keep it. Okay. And I am not in favor of keeping standalone even as a Plan B, quite honestly. And I think that, so obviously standalone is not an option at this point that we're going to pursue. So the direction to staff is that.
So where does that leave us with a Plan B then?
Well.
If we're taking everything off the table, does that mean we don't have any Plan Bs?
Not right now.
Well, not right now. And part of my reason for not supporting the standalone and also for not supporting it as a Plan B at this time is that I really believe that we need to put all our effort, all our energy, all our work right now into a really strong negotiation. We are in a position now where we can unify again with our partners in terms of a negotiation of the three of us, and we can go in stronger than if they were going separate and we came separate. And so I think now is the time, in my opinion, for us to put our energy into that focus and not splinter it amongst other things. The standalone is always there. If the South Metro, if we just go down this trajectory, starts to fall apart, we have that option, we can put the work on that. But at this point, I feel like our resources, our talent, our time, our money are much better spent on a single trajectory towards getting the absolute best service and price that we can and joining in with our partners. I also think that splintering up all of our assets and everything else as we try to look at, even if we go with a standalone, what does that start to look like? So that becomes very, very complicated and really starts to dilute the effort that I feel like we need to do in order to get this thing in the best possible place that we can get it for our community. So that's kind of my. We'll go around the table one more time. Carol?
Our partners are going for inclusion. Are we going also for inclusion? We don't need to.
I don't believe you need to make that decision tonight. I think that'll come out of the conversation here with South Metro, and then you as Council can make that call here in the future. That's my.
Part of the negotiation.
We do have options. Yeah, we have more options than our partners do right now.
I think so.
A lot more, yeah.
So for the attorney, then after the end of the period of this agreement that we go into, say all three of us, we go into this thing, and we decide we don't like it anymore, we take our fire trucks and go home?
At least one third of a fire truck.
We get our equipment and.
Certainly it's going to be part of all the negotiations. I mean, it's kind of hard, it's hard when you look at this because the two partners to this intergovernmental agreement, they didn't, A, they didn't have employees, and B, they had some equipment they owned, some that they shared with us, and then some that we own. And so they, from a very particular standpoint, I think obviously, we're going to have some interests that are similar to our partners, and we're going to have some different interests. And so this is going to be part of those negotiation processes. I mean, for our partners, keep in mind, they started their negotiations with South Metro six months ago. So they kind of know where they are because they'd had a longer timeframe. We're now going to be jumping into this now. And I think we have to know the negotiation issues. I would say some things we won't like the partners, some things won't, and we'll have to just deal with that through the negotiations.
So. Final, hold on, hold on, Karina. Kyle, do you have any final thoughts?
I think we're in this situation partially because of a lack of listening from previous councils, and I think that in this situation, everything I'm hearing from the financial side, from the first responder side, from the legal side, from staff's side, from citizens, is that this is pretty much our only option. So I think it makes sense. I think we need to start listening rather than not listening and raising more questions when we know the answers for the most part.
Yeah, there were a lot of smart people in that room last Thursday or Friday, and I really took what, not just what our group had to say, but our partners had to say. And I want to piggyback on what Kyle said, you know, I think I heard him loud and clear, and I feel like this is the only viable option. The one question I would have is how does, you know, do we own the land under these stations? I assume we do. And do we lease the buildings, or is that all up for negotiation?
That's all going to be up for negotiation. Some we own the land underneath, some we don't own the land underneath, and some we own pieces of the, shares of the land, but not the entire thing.
How about the minerals?
Sounds like we had attorneys involved on this deal.
There will be more of them involved. Probably three of them at least.
Peggy?
Yeah, I just, I want to make an observation. I still think this is the right, the way to go. But we've just been saying all this on the TV for the world to hear, for them to hear. So to say this is our only viable option essentially says some things that we wouldn't, they can just say naughty words about.
Showing our hand is what you're saying.
We gave it away. So I'm not sure what.
We'll start this meeting again.
What we really can get that some of us said we really would like X, Y, and Z when we've just said, if we don't get X, Y, and Z, that's the way it is.
Councilmember Cole, I'm going to address this from the legal side, and the city manager may have some comments. I think obviously, as we go into these negotiations, we will do definitely some things differently than the partners did because one of the things the partners have was the ability to talk with their lawyer in executive session. You're not going, normally in a property acquisition and a property sale and a contract negotiation process, in every other place I've been, we would be doing this, I'd be giving you legal advice and getting direction from you as a client behind closed doors. That's not the public policy in this city, and so be it. So I would just say, some of the negotiation processes, I'll be working with the city manager and the staff, and certainly, they may not lend themselves to being done here, but we will find ways consistent with the public policy of the city to do that.
I would also add that, and I agree with the city attorney, it's quite unfortunate that we have, and this is not the first time it's happened, but where we literally show all of our cards because we don't have the privilege of executive. That is a crucial element to effectively running the community. But we also have a lot of advantages, and we also have a lot of positive, a lot of good things that we can negotiate with South Metro. We do bring a lot to the table. So I think that we're not, we're not, we're not all the honey ball in this one. I think we do have some, particularly going with the three of us, I think that's out. That's very helpful.
I think the only thing I'd add is that I think with the direction now that the council's provided here, I think the negotiations, we're going to know pretty quick where we stand, I think, with South Metro. So I think in the couple of months here, I think we're going to have, if we start running into any serious issues here, we'll be reporting back that to Council pretty quick.
Still going around. Oh, Karina? Karina, any last comments?
I'll echo exactly what Mark, I do, I will actually echo exactly what Mark just alluded to, what I was going to say as well, was that I think that if you choose us, as this really does seem to be our most viable option, that we just move to get through this discovery phase really quick so that we begin to unturn, you know, anything that might come up as a potential issue. So I think the sooner we can get through this diligence, true diligence phase, I think the quicker we'll be able to, you know, reinforce the confidence that we feel in this direction.
Yes. Okay. Everybody feel good?
Bye, Ellen.
All right, we return. Thank you.
Thanks, Karina, for.